Okay, and we are live, so we can start whenever he gets on.
Who's third in line?
No, I think it would be Monte.
I like that reaction, Mike.
Oh, no, no, no. I think it's Jack.
You don't want that yet.
Yeah, I think maybe we default to Jack. Does that work?
Jack. Oh, there we go.
Oh, there's Dr. Kohler.
Yeah, there.
Oh, good.
You're on mute, ma'am.
Sorry about that. I apologize for being late. I had a call run long. I'm very sorry. How are you all this morning?
Good.
I should probably change out my background since I'm not at work. I'll get there. Okay, what do we need to do to get going?
We already are live and ready to go.
Okay. I think Ben, you're running this meeting, right?
Yes, I'll be kicking it off. So do we just roll into it?
Do we want to do a roll call, Terry?
Yes, let's just do a quick roll call so I make sure everyone's here and their meets are on. Let's see, Director Bragman?
You're.
Great. Director Gibson?
Here.
Director Russell? Okay, Director Schmidt?
Here.
And President Kohler?
Here.
Thanks. And do you want to adopt the agenda? Someone wants to make a motion to do that?
To move.
Approval to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Okay, great. Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Gibson?
Aye.
Director Russell? Director Schmidt?
Aye.
And President Kohler?
Aye, and I think we should probably take a moment to see if there's any public comment for items not on the agenda.
Seeing no raised hands, we do not have any.
Great. I think with that, we are ready to move on to the agenda, right?
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
Okay, I'll kick this off. Good morning, board members and the public. This is our third workshop designed to develop a 10-year financial plan with the first workshop split into two parts. So today, staff's going to be presenting investment scenarios, and these scenarios were developed by taking the building blocks that we developed in the two earlier workshops and putting them into alternative integrated investment approaches. So first two workshops, we're looking at individual asset classes, so pipes, pump stations, water supply. And the investment scenarios you'll be seeing today were pulled from those prioritized asset classes into a system-wide approach. And I think this will become clear as we move into the presentation. I did want to note, just a reminder to all of us, this is not a rate-setting exercise, even though we're going to be talking about financial implications. The 10-year plan's intended to be a long-term document for future financial planning, and there are a lot of ways to think about long-term investments. So there's no right answer in any of this, of course. And this will be a living document designed to change as evolving priorities emerge over time. So with that, Melissa. So in developing the financial plan, we've looked at both capital and operating needs, and we'll talk about both today. It's mostly focused on capital needs. The intent, of course, is to develop it in concert with staff, the board, and the community, and look at a wide range of investments and how they may look, their costs or benefit and similar. So we developed these, as I noted, these scenarios are integrated approaches, but looking at the major asset classes and operating programs and kind of evaluating them against resource availability, of course, intended to provide this long-term prioritized approach that will likely evolve as we learn more about the system or things emerge, right? You could have a new regulation or the like. So this, every couple of years, will be updated with the board and community to have this always a document that we can refer to in terms of long-term financial planning. So I'm going to do a very brief recap, just to get things going here. We looked at eight asset classes that are noted that essentially cover the entire assets in the system, and we do within water supply. This is not, and really the watershed, this is not just looking at gray infrastructure. We're looking at distributed infrastructure. We're looking at the green infrastructure of the watershed. So really a holistic view at our system. So an example, we looked at tanks, and specifically, we drilled down into coating and looking at different levels of investment, the status quo level, level C, B, and A, increasing levels of investments. We'd be able to increase our progress on some of the deferred investments that we find ourselves in. You know, just to note that we find ourselves with these needs, not because we haven't been doing a good job. We have, but we are the oldest water agency, and our system is showing us age, and that's really what we've done in the past workshops and we intend to do today is look at a system that's well over 100 years old and strategize and plan out future investments. We also looked at pipelines as another example, and the orange is the cast iron, and that's the area where we're pretty focused. And you can see that we do have a legacy of old cast iron pipes that have and are exceeding their useful life and a lot of breakage. And what's our investment strategy and how do we, or can we, and should we accelerate the investments on pipes like all of the asset classes? And we also looked at pump stations, again, looking at both the age, the useful life of the pump station itself, of the pumps themselves, the ages suggesting a need for rehabilitation of these assets with a focus on wildfire resiliency, structure hardening, and backup generators just to increase our response capability and resiliency for natural disasters. And lastly, just in this exercise, of course, we went through the eight asset classes, and what we'll be talking about in upcoming slides more about this. But on the watershed, we looked at scenarios that would increase, would accelerate the BIFIC work, the key work to for fuel reduction and habitat benefit, looked at natural resource restoration. We've talked quite a bit about the recreational plan and improving the experience and addressing some conflicts that occurs at times among users with a focus, of course, of wildfire preparation and mitigation. So with that, I'll hand it over to Melissa, who will review the drivers that make up that go into developing the 10-year financial plan, and she'll also review what we're going to be talking about today. Melissa?
Thank you, Ben. Just for those might be listening that haven't been introduced to me before, I'm Melissa Elliott. I am a consultant working for Raftellus, helping the Marin Municipal Water District work on their financial plan, their 10-year financial plan. And a financial plan is a little bit like a roadmap. For Marin Water, there are eight factors that are really driving the district to develop a plan, and they're there on your screen. I'll just go ahead and read them for you. First is that infrastructure that is aging is beyond its maintenance cycle within the district. And you have a beloved watershed that's seeing more and more visitors every year. There's a lot of pressure to keep water bills affordable. I mean, the pandemic has just reinforced that pressure within the community. Climate change is impacting our future water supply. There are evolving customer expectations that must be met. The system, as has been just described, is very complex and very old as well. He mentioned that Marin Water is the oldest municipal water district in the state, and it has some very unique needs. There are some regulatory changes that require investments, and of course, there's always pressure from increasing costs to run and maintain a water system. So some of these drivers, you may notice, are really in conflict with each other. For example, the pressure to keep water bills affordable will likely be a factor in your decision-making and will likely be in conflict with some of the other drivers, like investing and repairing and replacing infrastructure that's beyond its aging, beyond its maintenance cycle. So some drivers are tied to things that you may not control, also like regulatory changes that require investments or the fact that the costs to run and maintain a water system are increasing. And some drivers are more tied to customer interests than others, for example, those evolving customer expectations and a watershed that receives so many visitors. So these eight drivers were part of the considerations that staff made in developing the scenarios that I'm going to introduce to you in a few moments. And as we finish the presentation today and turn to you to get your thoughts, you'll see this slide again so that we can kind of dive into these drivers with the scenarios in mind and think about which scenario or scenarios best align to those drivers at that time. So Ben gave you a quick recap on what you saw in Workshop 1A and 1B, and these workshops were shared as the building blocks of the financial plan. And today, in Workshop 2, we're going to focus on those scenarios that had been developed from those building blocks. Where we previously talked about the seven asset classes and the operating needs separately, today you'll see how staff took your input and built scenarios that are designed to get at those drivers while keeping your input in front of us. So after the workshop, you'll be able to see we'll be progressing through two additional workshops that each build on each other. These workshops have all been designed to ensure we hear from you, and it's critical that staff really do get direction from the board. What you saw in Workshop 1A and 1B, and again today, and in the following workshops, is that we've really focused on providing a broad look at the whole water system in its current state and what we know to be true about all of our asset classes and operating programs and staff's recommendations of how to invest in the water system over the next 10 years. So we have a three-hour window of time today, although we may not need that much time. Part of my role is to keep us moving forward. And in these virtual settings, I know it's really important to end on time, so I may on occasion move us forward. Just know that that's my effort to keep us moving through this, so we do end on time. So let's talk a bit about the key takeaways that we heard from you in Workshop 1A and B. We focused on storage tanks, water supply, treatment plants, pipelines, watershed facilities, and capital equipment and pump stations, and we shared those operating programs with you. We heard that you wanted to focus on risk and not necessarily the metrics presented, like miles of pipe or a number of tanks reaching the end of their useful life. Essentially, you want to know where we're going to be in 10 years, and you'll see today that staff has really built a set of scenarios that build on each other and will summarize with what can be achieved in each of the scenario over 10 years. So you'll see that we can get, we can't get everything done, right, in the 10 years. The list is just simply too large, and that gets us to our second takeaway here. Although you'll see some very accelerated scenarios, what you're not going to see is the moonshot scenario, where we take one thing and just accelerate it all the way through. Staff really did take a look at it, but prioritizing just one area left too many holes in other areas to be able to service customers. So instead, to address this interest, you'll see four scenarios, and three of those really do go beyond where we are today. And one in particular really would succeed in modernizing the water system. So you know it's important to remember that the district is the oldest municipal water district. I'm going to say that a lot because it's really a highly unique system, which is why you're seeing this combination of factors today. That means just frankly, that there's a lot to do, as you saw during the last two sessions. And next, we definitely heard consensus around prioritizing wildfire preparation and mitigation activities from the board in our last two sessions. So you'll see that every scenario presented today has this as a focus. Other key takeaways that we had, prioritizing across the asset areas was an interest as well. This was obviously a major focus of scenario development. The scenarios build on themselves, and you'll see that we get more and more invested, investments added within each asset class that's prioritized. There was also an interest in understanding how decentralized infrastructure fits within these assets, and I know there was a separate meeting to discuss that. But what you'll see here, starting in the second scenario that Alicia will describe, you'll see an increased water efficiency investments beginning to be added. And there were definitely suggestions on how to fold public comments into future workshops to make sure that questions are answered and input received and that we really did need to ensure the discussion is accessible to the public. So to address the first part of this, Director Kohler, since you're running the meeting today, if you'll agree, we'll make an effort to check him with staff as we go along and see if there's any public participation that needs to be had to hear from the public a few times more during the meeting. I just wanted to make sure that was okay with you, Director Kohler.
Of course, absolutely. This is a public meeting. That's what we want to be doing.
Great. We just want to be more mindful of that in this session. And then I think what you'll hopefully see in the presentations, we've taken and we simplified some of these scenarios so that they're a little bit less technical. As Alicia introduces them, she'll provide that less technical slide which references the scenario, and you'll see the pipelines build on each other as a way to kind of help the public understand this story. Those that aren't, you know, living it like you all are on a daily basis to help them understand, then she'll follow up with more technical details and the costs that the board needs to see, you know. But generally, the input that we've received so far from you is that was positive, that now is the time to develop a holistic plan, one that's going to evolve with the district, but one that provides that roadmap that you're seeking to move forward. So today, we're going to be focused on four scenarios, similar to our last meeting. Each of these, after Alicia goes through each of the scenarios, we'll have a few minutes for Q and A. And but I want to make sure we reserve some time at the end, when you've seen all the scenarios and you've seen the funding strategies that go along with them, to really get a sense of where we're at. So we have built into our agenda a 10-minute break. I'm going to ask if you need that at that time. That'll be after the scenarios and before the financial piece. If you need it, we'll take it, and if not, we'll just press on. But we want to make sure that we give you a good look at what things cost, right, and the revenue needs level and the potential ways to fund these needs, and that'll be coming in at the end of the workshop. So let's just take a brief look at the next two workshops we are planning. So for Workshop number three, which is going to be done this spring, we'll be making sure that we obviously are always answering your questions and addressing what we hear from you. But on the financial side, we're really going to be working with your staff, hopefully on a narrowed set of scenarios to build up that financial model so we can better show you how the scenarios play out long term. And then in Board Workshop number four, that'll be our last session, and obviously, we'll be taking care of any outstanding issues. But really, what we want to do is present the actual financial plan, your roadmap, to you, so that you can see what it would look like for implementation. So let's go ahead and get started on these scenarios. We've got, I just want to introduce what scenario planning is, in case we've got members of the public online, that that's a new term for them. Utilities have typically done traditional forecast planning, which is there on your left. And that is, we take a look at what has happened in the past, and we just extrapolate forward. We assume that what has happened in the past will happen again, and that's what our forecast is. And that, you know, frankly, has served us reasonably well as a utility industry. But if this last year has taught us anything, it's that uncertainties are always going to exist. And so Marin Water is taking a different approach to this, and they are using scenario planning, which takes what we know about today and envisions multiple futures while allowing the organization to make decisions now that will position them for any one of those scenarios in the future. So our hope is that by presenting these scenarios, we will think more broadly by looking at a range of possible outcomes. Each is backed by a sequence of events that could lead to them, and the exercise is particularly valuable because we just have that quirk, because we're humans, that leads us to expect that the future is going to resemble the past, and that change is going to occur only gradually. And I think we can all say, boy, that didn't happen in the last year, and it was a good, true lesson learned, you know, not directly related to the utility industry itself. But it is something to always keep in mind. Things could quite quickly become much better or worse, and we need to increase our readiness with the range of possibilities the future might hold. So Alicia's going to be introducing these four scenarios. They are additive. I want to make sure you know they add, just like segments of a pipeline, we add on, and they're all over 10 years. So when you see the cost, think about it in terms of 10 years. So we're going to start with reactionary, which is kind of starting with our current look at things. And you'll see a slide for each scenario that provides a description. And then Alicia will walk you through those details of what is in there and the costs and allow you to think about those eight drivers that we introduced at the top of this. So let's get started, and I'll turn it over to Alicia.
Thank you, Melissa. So before I get into each scenario in more detail, I just want to give a quick summary of what I'm going to be going over today. So next slide, please. Yeah. So the first scenario that I'll be discussing is the reactionary scenario. And this scenario is closely related to the status quo scenario or investment level that we discussed in Workshop 1A and 1B, and that it approximates our current expenditure rate. So this scenario would require reliance on a reactive approach to address the immediate needs of our critical infrastructure and natural resources. The total investment cost for this scenario over the 10-year period from fiscal year '24 to fiscal year '33 is $256 million.
Alicia, can I just briefly, I just wanted to share with the board that we spent a lot of time on these names, and they aren't perfect, particularly the first one reactionary. And Mike Bond, our engineering chief engineer here, did talk a lot. It's not really reactionary because we do plan out the capital program, but it's a way to reflect that a lot of the projects are based upon kind of failure or near failure. So it's a bit at one end of the spectrum versus the others, but it still was not the perfect word. So I just wanted to note that, that we recognize it, and it's not, these are thoughtful investments, $400 million over the last 20 years that have really allowed us to maintain our core business of delivering safe and reliable water. So I don't want folks to get too focused on that word.
Can I ask a clarifying question at the outset here that'll help me to see these scenarios in a way that is, I think, particularly important to me and probably to others, which is, you know, I know we talk a lot about the aging infrastructure that we're managing and that, you know, that aging infrastructure ages with every passing day. And so the amount of funds that are needed to keep pace with replacement or restoration of aging infrastructure grows with every day. Of course, we're doing work, you know, under the current scenario to address that. But I'm, one thing I'm particularly interested in understanding in these different scenarios is whether the gap, and you could just measure it based on cost to be up to date with current, where everything is up to date. Everything, nothing is past its age date or, you know, needs a big investment in order to be where it should be by industry standards, which I know are also, you know, there's assumptions and judgments about what that means. But to the extent that there can be some light shown on how these different scenarios are maintaining our current gap, if you want to call it a gap, whether it's closing it or is it expanding, you know, and if it's closing, at what kind of a rate so that someday down the road, where we are, I would think if we were in the scenario we'd love to be in, is we are keeping pace with our maintenance. And nothing is really falling where it's outside of its restoration date or replacement date.
Yeah, I think today we'll be doing that, but feel free if it's not fully there to ask questions, Director Schmidt, as to that. I also just wanted to reflect that, okay, this last one, contemporary and proactive, may meet that very high bar of, okay, we're exactly where we and every other water agency would like to be. The fact is, few, if any, are actually there. I think one way we'll think about this is, how do we get on a trajectory? And even if we, you know, biting off in 10 years, the highest level of investment, I think clearly may be a bit much for us. How do we get on that trajectory? And, you know, what we can help do perhaps in, you know, taking this a bit further for the next workshop is zeroing in in some detail on the gap, but I think a fair amount of it's going to be clearer as we move into the presentation. And really where we are, just my last comment, is where infrastructure generally in this country is, and that's, you know, development occurred around the Bay Area, if we think about it, in these waves. And that's what we're kind of finding. You know, we had the cast iron wave. We had the development of this water system wave, and it's just showing us age. And how do we tackle it so we're leaving this agency in the condition we want to for the future, right? We're over 100 years old. We'll be here for another 100, 200 years. We aren't going anywhere. And how do we get on that trajectory, you noted? So I hope we'll answer at least most of that, and we'll clarify any gaps that we have remaining in subsequent workshops.
I have a question too, if it's appropriate here. On this scenario system I'm looking at here, as well as the eight categories that were on before, it all seems to me, and maybe by definition, this was supposed to be, maintenance-driven. What about something like, I think, for example, we should be aggressively expanding our recycle water effort? Does that not fit into this plan? Where in this scenario system would that fall, or where in the eight categories we talked about with something like that? It's not, it's a new expansion.
Exactly. So we're kind of thinking about these broadly as there's needs and there's opportunities. So AMI, for example, recycled water, upgrading the treatment plants to better address taste and odors. They all kind of fall into maybe opportunities. So they're generally in the higher investment categories, but I believe as we go through, as Alicia goes through the individual investment scenarios, Director Gibson, that'll become clearer to you. And part of what we're interested hearing from the board is recycled water, based on your comment, may not fall in the place in the investment scenario you believe it should. And that's going to be very valuable information for us in preparation for the next workshop, because all of these building blocks, we can move. We can move those around. So we are very interested in comments like that, that you don't believe recycled water, it could be in contemporary. I'm not even sure it's in there. But you want to see that moved up, and that's the kind of discussion we can do, and we can bring that forward to maintaining system reliability, for example, that would increase the cost, or we could talk to the board about other projects in that category that may not rise to the same priority that you and other board members may see recycled water. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that's to me.
And I'm just going to suggest, I think we should actually walk through the scenarios, because these titles are, they're fine, but I think we really need to unpack them, let you guys unpack them for us before, because I expected a lot more behind them.
Yes.
Okay, great. So with that, I'll continue on. I just want to briefly introduce the remaining three scenarios, and then I will be going into each of the scenarios in more detail with not only a brief, more detailed description, but also a technical breakdown and some examples that will be taking place within each of the scenarios. So the maintaining system reliability scenario builds upon the reactionary scenario. So the maintaining system reliability scenario builds upon the reactionary scenario and allows us to extend the useful life of our infrastructure, accelerate our wildfire mitigation efforts and protect public safety. The total investment cost is $319 million for an additional cost over the reactionary scenario of $63 million. Moving on, the moving towards resilient scenario, again, builds upon the reliability scenario and allows for further acceleration of the replacement of our aging infrastructure and restoration of our natural resources. And this scenario would cost a total of $414 million over the 10 year period. The last scenario that I'll be discussing today, contemporary and proactive, really allows for the modernization of our water district, allows for addressing, addressing climate change and also for the preparation of emergencies. And the total cost for this scenario is $618 million. So going back to the reactionary scenario, next slide, Melissa. As Melissa mentioned, Rainwater is California's oldest municipal water district. And as a result, we have a system that is increasingly complex. And while fixing our infrastructure, when it's failing, may keep our system running. It does not address the increasing age and condition of our existing infrastructure. This scenario allows for the ramping up of replacement of our drinking water storage tanks, such as Ross Reservoir and Pine Mountain Tunnel, and also allows for the replacement of seven miles of pipeline per year and 25% of our plastic service laterals. The scenario also strengthens our water supply and allows for upgrades to six critical pump stations. Finally, this scenario would allow for the addition of two Rangers to our staffing program for a total additional cost of $256 million. This total cost can be broken out across our eight asset classes with approximately half of that amount going towards our pipeline asset class, $43 million going towards our storage tanks, 30 million to our facilities and capital equipment, and almost $25 million going towards our watershed. And again, this scenario would allow for infrastructure improvements that are needed to sustain clean and safe drinking water to our customers. So now we'll move on.
Can I just ask, before you move on to scenario two, so, so as you're going through this, and I know Ben mentioned earlier, you know, that you were looking at some more, you know, distributed decentralized investments over time. I'm not seeing anything here at all on that. So you're not, you're not planning for any increased water use efficiency investments. We're just going to keep those out of capital for this, for this scenario. Is that correct?
The, there will be explicit funding dedicated in the next scenario that I'll be discussing and that will be.
I'm just asking about this one, just, just so I understand this one. So there's no investment anticipated in the reactionary scenario for enhanced water use efficiency. Is that, I'm just making sure I understand this scenario before you move on.
That, that, that's correct beyond what we currently have. Yes.
Got it. Okay. Thanks.
Could I ask a sort of fundamental question? Is this 256 million in addition to what we're currently spending or is this the, this is the budget?
Yeah. So this scenario would match our expenditure rate. It closely matches what we anticipate for our revenue from the rates and the capital maintenance fee. So it's not in addition. It's, it's basically our budget.
This is basically your sequoia no action alternative is, is what I'm, that's the, that's the analog here, right? This, this is just maintaining the status quo.
Right. Maintaining the status quo, which is an ongoing, you know.
Which is, which requires expense. It's not, right, right. I don't mean it's no action in that sense, but this is, this is, this is steady state.
Yes.
Correct. So then moving forward, we now build upon that scenario towards maintaining system reliability. And this scenario would cost an additional $78.2 million over that 10 year period. And this would allow for upgrades and repairs to vulnerable parts of our system and protect our customers from service disruptions from various hazards such as earthquakes, wildfires and other infrastructure failures. And this scenario would allow us to increase our pipeline replacement rate to eight miles of pipeline per year as well as performing the replacement of the North Rand Transmission Line. It would also allow for restoration of natural resources, additional wildfire protection, as well as funding for enhanced water conservation. And this scenario would allow for improvement to our infrastructure to make it more resilient to earthquakes as well as increase our funding for wildfire fuel reduction by 15% and allow for upgrades to our wildly firefighting equipment. Operationally, this scenario would allow for training and development for our employees. So now to give a more technical breakdown, the additional $78.2 million that would be required for this scenario is distributed across our eight asset classes with additional $21 million towards our pipeline asset classes, $17 and a half million towards our treatment plants, $10 million towards our watershed and $2 million towards our water supply, targeting that enhanced water conservation. And again, this scenario, maintaining system reliability, allows us to focus on projects to protect public safety through seismic reliability improvements and accelerating our wildfire mitigation efforts for a total of $319 million over the 10 year period. Three example projects that would take place within this scenario are the North Rand Line Transmission Project, the San Geronimo Treatment Plant Clarifier, as well as accelerated covert repairs along our watershed. The North Marin Line Transmission Project would allow for the replacement of North Rand Transmission Line, which feeds water from Kent and Nacaseo Lakes towards the San Geronimo Treatment Plant and is the sole transmission line feeding water to the San Geronimo Treatment Plant. So if this line were to fail, there would be no water feeding San Geronimo. This transmission line is a 33 inch concrete pipe that has an extensive leak history and has been proven difficult to repair. The replacement of the clarifiers at the San Geronimo Treatment Plant would allow for improved seismic reliability to this treatment plant after a seismic event. And again, just a reminder, the San Geronimo Treatment Plant is the largest water treatment plant in our system today. The acceleration of the covert replacement program would allow for the hundreds of culverts that lie along our watershed and that are in need of repair that were either not designed to accommodate peak winter flows or are beyond their useful life. These functioning culverts would protect water quality through reducing erosion on our stream banks and road surfaces and also allow for access to our various watershed visitors. So before I move on to the next scenario, I just want to give a space for any questions that may have come up.
Sure. And I, I hate to, you know, keep going back to this, but what is the water use efficiency piece of this scenario? What, what, what are you anticipating? I, I just couldn't, and it's just not broken out here, so I can't really tell. So what would be different under the scenario? What would we be doing in a, in a more enhanced state over what we're doing now?
So the, that is the $2 million that's targeted under the water supply asset class, just to clarify that. And there would be increased distributed infrastructure projects. Sorry, there's some construction taking place outside my window. And allow for increased public outreach as well as conservation programs under our water efficiency department. I don't know, Ben, if you want to expand on that.
Well, so, so for example, I mean, 200, I mean, 2 million over 10 years is not a very significant increase. It's, I mean, we're basically looking at less than half a million a year. So we wouldn't be doing much. I mean, we might be doing more public outreach. And again, I'm not criticizing. I just want to make sure I understand what each scenario is, is providing. But this would basically be, be a fairly modest increase in what we have now, like maybe one other person. Is that what you're anticipating? Two million over the 10 year period?
Well, what we were thinking specifically is this would allow us to increase the sort of rebates we provide, the approaches to incentives. In addition to, as we shared at the communications meeting, we do have a fair amount of budgeted money allocated for our incentive program that hasn't been fully tapped over the years. So this would add to that sort of third that we heard.
Okay. But I'm just saying, I, I just want to make sure I understand. So it's basically 2 million over 10 years. So I mean, I would see this as a, and again, but this is no criticism, just my, my getting straight where this is fitting into the grand scheme of things. But really a very modest increase over in terms of annual expenditures on this. Because if we're going to scale those programs, we would certainly have to spend more than one FTE a year, I think. And that, I'm just saying, that's what this looks like to me, a little, maybe even a little less than one over the 10 year period. I mean, that's, that's the thinking here, right?
Well, it could either go into resources or directly into, and that's probably what we're thinking, directly into kind of gooseing up the amount focused on, you know, long turf replacement, for example, and we could.
Okay. But I'm just saying, it's still just a couple hundred thousand a year. It's not much.
Right.
Okay. All right.
And not to, not to harp on, on my, what might be my favorite topic, which is, I love, I understand, like, just to look at the pipe replacement scenario. We've gone from the reactionary model of seven miles per year. This is, takes it up to eight miles per year. At eight miles per year, or how are we closing, you know, would, would it take 10 years for us to close the gap on catching up to pipe replacement? For 20 years, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to see this increase in, in the context of like, if I was saying, you know, the thing that matters most to me is, is pipe replacement so that we have reliable pipes that aren't going to burst and cost us more money than, than if we could get ahead of it. I don't know how to gauge that added investment unless I can see it in terms of what does it do to get us toward our goal, which ultimately would be our pipes are all replaced on time so that, you know, in a sustainable way, such that we, we don't have risky pipelines out there.
Yeah. So pipes are among the toughest of the asset class in a couple of ways. One is they're buried. So doing inspections and understanding where a given pipe is in terms of its useful life isn't as easy as inspecting a tank, for example. But there, there are metrics. There's age, condition, leak history, break history and those sorts of things. And that's what we use. But to give you a better feel, we, we have, Alicia, how many miles of cast iron pipe do you know approximately?
Yeah. So on the 900 miles of total pipe that we have, there's about 300 miles of cast iron pipe in our system.
And roughly it's maybe a million and a half plus per mile.
Correct. Yes.
So we're, we're looking at approximately, if we wanted to address the cast iron pipes, but there's also plastic services that are problematic. We would hit that in, you know, in doing right, the back of the envelope math, that's $500 million just approximately just on pipes. And that would probably get us where kind of that bar, I think, direct that you indicated. But right, the thought here is taking a balanced approach. Some pipes will last well beyond their useful life and some unfortunately won't last up to their useful, their expected life. So it, it, it is a bit of a moving target and that asset class does dominate. When we look at the investment needs of the system, or if we just think about it in terms of replacement costs of our assets. So 900 miles, average age of 50 to 60 years of the pipes. It, it, it's a daunting asset class to get your arms around and reach that level that you indicated, but I don't.
I, that's, that's helpful, Ben. I just, you know, it gives me a sense of whether are we again, closing the gap or are we, is the gap, you know, and if at all, how, how quickly. So in 10 years, we'll have replaced 80 of the 300 miles of cast iron. Assuming, you know, if you could focus on casting, sorry, that's me. Am I echoing?
Larry Russell.
Keep, go ahead and keep going.
With your audio. Yeah.
I also want to clarify that. I also want to clarify that these, these eight miles or 80 miles over the 10 years would be targeted. So there would be certain factors that would be taken into account, such as the pipeline material, like the cast iron, but also pipelines that lie in geo hazard areas or areas of liquefaction. The consequence of failure, if, if certain pipelines were to break, there's higher consequences in various areas of our system as well as the coordination with the various jurisdictions that lie within our service area to reduce the customer impact and cost of these construction projects. So it's, it's really, you know, picking the right miles of pipe to replace over the 10 year period.
You bet. I, I, I know that you folks are being far more intelligent about it. I'm just using the cast iron as a surrogate for, for it and just giving a sense that, you know, if we just focused only on cast iron, 80 miles out of the 300, we're chipping away, but not, you know, that still leaves 240, you know, to be dealt with, you know, in the subsequent 10, 20, 30 years. So just trying to understand how that's helping.
So I think one thing, so I, I hear where you're coming from, Monty, and I, I agree, this is something we've, we've talked about, you know, and have, have addressed, not simply talked about, that we have been addressing for some time. And, you know, I think it would be helpful and I, I don't know if we can do that today, just given time constraints. But I think I'm going to suggest to the, the team, maybe a retro perspective at some point very soon separately about where we've been with the pipe replacements, you know, similarly, when, when I came on the board, you know, some time ago, we were starting a similar kind of approach with tanks and now we're almost done. I mean, so it's, it's, I think it's important to look at the historical context, what's before, we actually don't, I, I feel a little differently, Monty, because I don't feel like we have to do everything right now, right? I mean, there are going to be future repairs. There's going to be, you know, there, there is, you know, there is, there is a process. And I think what we need to do in this next 10 years, figure out how much do we want to accelerate that process? And how much do we need to based on what's, what's there? It's not as though we haven't been replacing pipes all along and along, right, as Ben was saying. So the question is, what do we reasonably need to get done in this period, given that this is a very long-lived system? So I think, at least for me, the question on the, on the pipeline piece right now is what I'm seeing is, is that under this sort of second scenario, you're looking at upping what would be the status quo of replacing seven miles a year to eight miles a year. That's kind of the bottom line, right?
Yeah, our, our average over the past five to 10 years has been about eight miles of pipeline a year. Okay. So in the, in the status quo reactionary scenario, that eight miles is reduced to seven to allow for a better distribution of our expenditures across our asset classes, such as increasing the replacement of our storage tanks, our pipeline, our pump stations. And this scenario would bring that back to our, you know, historic average.
Yeah, I think that it's important to realize that we're not talking apples and apples here. The materials that are being replaced, welded steel, cathodically protected and plastic, do not have the life expectancies or the issues that cast iron has. So the, the average expected life is increasing with the materials we're replacing. So it's, it's not fair, Monty, to think about it as we're replacing 10% per year is going to, will we ever catch up? Because we're not replacing 10% per, per year. We're replacing more than that because the materials we're replacing with lasts longer than the materials that are there.
Yeah, I don't mean to shine an overly bright spotlight. I was just trying to understand how this was closing the gap on, on something that we're trying to deal with. It's a, a, a long-term problem.
Yeah, it's a good question. It's a good question. Just understand that the, I say it's not apples and apples.
Isn't the target information we need is what does it take us to get to even? And then how many miles and dollars per year after that to stay at even? Is that what we're shooting for here with this, this, this plan?
This, well, this scenario will take us to what we've been replacing on an average rate. And then the further scenarios will increase that and further close that gap that Director Schmidt has been talking about.
Director Bagman's got his hand up.
Thanks a lot. Can you break out the cost of replacing the North Marin Line? I mean, that seems like a critical piece of infrastructure.
Yeah. So that segment of pipeline that we're talking about takes, takes us from the bottom of Kent Lake to the San Geronimo Treatment Plant. And that's about four miles long. So that project, just as an individual project, would cost. So that project, just as an individual project, would cost about $6 million using the $1.5 million per mile replacement rate.
Okay, but I mean, it just seems like that is a indispensable piece of infrastructure that needs to be dealt with. You know, if that breaks the whole thing, everything stops. And the other thing, just real quickly, I do kind of agree with Cynthia as far as water efficiency and investing, making those kind of distributed investments. But I don't want to sidetrack us, but yeah, I think that North Marin line is something we need to keep our eye on. So thanks for the information.
I think it might be a good idea to check with Terry, who's running kind of the backend of our Zoom call, to see if we've got any public comment that needs to be added in at this time.
Okay, let me check. I think I see Roger Roberts with his hand up. Let me ask him.
Yes.
Go ahead, sir, you can speak.
Several things that isn't, aren't clear to me. So bear with me. Do these costs that are projected include inflators over the period of the investment that's being pursued? I assume that scenario number four is one that would get us to industry standard. Is that true or not true? Is it possible to pick and choose and change the mix in these various scenarios? For example, why don't we include Castania in keeping the system on its status quo? Standard of performance. And then the elephant in the room is, what if we have a 10-year drought? We're going to have to make some other kinds of investments. And what might those be? Those are just some thoughts that occurred to me as we proceed down this review today. Thank you.
Alicia.
Mr. Roberts.
I, I can start, and then you can
Okay.
If that works.
Yeah.
They, these, I believe these costs are all in present dollars. But when later in the presentation, we, when we're looking at revenue needs to meet these investment scenarios, those costs are inflated when we're looking long-term. So you'll see that. The scenario for, yes, we're calling that industry standards. It's also, to some extent, I think the way I look at it anyway, it's sort of aspirational of how do we get on the trajectory to reach that 10 years, as folks will see, may be for us too big of a lift. And actually, it may not be needed for our system. Your other question is certainly, we're inviting comments from the board and the public on changing the mix of these scenarios. And these are all building blocks that they can move. But specifically on Castania, yeah, that, that is a high priority project to address the drought and also long-term resiliency for our water supply. We're currently moving forward, at least on the planning level now, for the project, and we'll be coming back in April to the board. So there's just certain projects, and it really does reflect, Mr. Roberts, just the dynamic nature of a plan like this. It's going to evolve over time, and there'll be priorities that come up like a drought. And your last comment was directly on the drought and elephant in the room. And you're exactly right, and it has the attention and focus certainly of the board and staff. And we're doing a lot of work, and were the drought to emerge, continue? No question, there'd be potential large projects that would impact this plan. And I, I would just say that reflects, there's a number of issues that could emerge over time that will shift the plan to adapt. And that's really what it's about, is adaptive management. So this plan is a guiding document, but we know full well, adaptive management will always be at play to address issues that emerge, and the drought's a good example.
And just one more. Just to clarify, Mr. Roberts' question about Castania, that project is specifically included, although it was not called out in the reactionary scenario. So it's included in the first scenario that I described.
As is for the board and public that's aware of our focus on it, Ross Resilart and Pine Mountain Tunnel, also in that first category.
That's correct.
Next speaker, Mimi Willard. Go ahead, Ms. Willard.
Okay, just two quick things. One is heads up and a great big thank you to Ben for sending to me last night at my request, the PowerPoint presentation. However, it is not posted to the website. So I'm hoping in the future, and I know Ben is in agreement, that in the future, there will be an effort to, to get the PowerPoint up earlier. And I don't know if you can correct it for today, but in case there's anybody from the public who is trying to access the meeting, they might like to download it, and maybe somebody in staff could actually upload it from the website in real time, like now. Secondly, just wanted to chime in an agreement that the four scenario titles, I think they're kind of problematic. They're, they're sort of loaded in terms of which ones would be favored or not favored, or, or, or good or substandard. And I might actually suggest to do something like scenarios one, two, three, and four, as you try to roll this forward to a larger number of people in the public who are paying attention to this. That would be my, my suggestion. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms.
Can you share where people can find the posted PowerPoint?
Sure, and if they go to our website and they click on Board of Directors, and when they click on Board of Directors, it's called Meetings, I'm sorry. Then they want to go to Board Calendar and Agendas under Meetings. And then you want to click on the meeting date, which would be today, March 23rd. When you click on March 23rd, Board of Directors, you go to View Event Details, and it's there on the bottom where it says Presentation, and the Presentation is there. So it is on our website, and it was there last night.
If I could interrupt, the best direct way is to go to the homepage, it's right on the front page. And then you'll see Calendar, click on the meeting, and it takes you directly to the materials for that day. But the homepage is a lot faster to access it yesterday when it was completed. I hope that helps.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for those comments. Let's go ahead and get back to Alicia, and she'll go through our next scenario.
Yeah, so this next scenario, we called it Moving Towards Resilience. It's an additive scenario towards our reliability scenario. And it allows us to establish critical system redundancy to address our aging infrastructure that's challenging our water system today. The total cost for this scenario over the 10-year period is $414 million. Allows for an additional pipeline, mile of pipeline to be replaced per year, for a total of nine miles of pipeline replaced per year, as well as 50% of our plastic service laterals. This scenario also allows us to address system-wide vulnerabilities from wildfires and earthquakes, increases our wildfire fuel reduction by 20%, as well as upgrades our emergency operations capabilities. The additional $91 million for this scenario is distributed, next slide please, across our eight asset classes, with notable increases going towards our pipeline asset class, storage tanks, pump stations, treatment plants, as well as $8 million each towards our watershed and water supply asset classes. And again, this scenario allows us to prepare for future conditions through accelerating our infrastructure replacement and updating our watershed recreation facilities to protect our natural resources and establish critical system redundancy. I'm going to go through three project examples that will take place during this scenario. These are welded steel tank recoding, Sulu Hui electrification, as well as increases to our BIFIP and fuel reduction program. At the beginning of this presentation, Ben went over our welded steel tank recoding, and how we're striving to get towards an interval of a sustainable asset replacement schedule, or asset recoding schedule, excuse me. And so the photos that you see here are Smith-Saddle tanks, and these tanks are two 5 million gallon tanks. And about half of our water goes through these tanks to get to our individual customers. And you can see the photo on the left that shows the current roof interior. These tanks were originally coated in 1963. And staying on a regular interval schedule of 20 to 25 years would allow for this project to stay as a minor recording project and not escalate towards a rehabilitation project. So we currently have 73 welded steel tanks in our system. And this scenario would allow for our welded steel tanks to get onto a regular replacement schedule, kind of to address Director Schmidt's comments that this is closing the gap on our welded steel tank asset class in this scenario. The Sulu Hui Electrification Project would allow for PG&E power to be run to Sulu Hui dam and pump station, alleviating the need for a temporary generator when we want to pump Sulu Hui water into our service area. And increases to our BIFIP and fuel reduction program would allow for increased vegetation management, as well as wildfire preparedness, to help us increase our wildfire mitigation efforts. And so these are just three examples of the many projects that will take place during this scenario. And before I move on, do we want to hold place for questions?
Yes. Yeah, thanks. I, I have a couple, just to, just to jump in, on the Sulu Hui electrification, are we looking at solar there at all? Is that feasible? Or have you just determined that you need to get onto the PG&E grid there?
I don't know of, of our research into implementing solar at that facility. However, the cost to run PG&E power there, we did look into a couple of years ago, and we brought it to present day costs for a total of about $6 million.
Okay, so we, we can talk about that offline, but obviously, that's some, the electrification piece is one we're going to want to deal with. So here, I'm going to ask again, what's the conservation, the water use efficiency bump from the prior scenarios? I see you're going 8 million up for water supply total, but, or 19, but, but I can't tell. Yeah, 8 million total, so what are we looking at?
So that 8 million is broken out.
Describe the difference in that.
Yeah, that 8 million dollars has to do with two, two projects. One is the Sulu Hui Electrification Project, and then another project would be looking into a regional groundwater conjunctive use. So
Okay, so we're looking at regional groundwater conjunctive use, but we're not enhancing water use efficiency under the scenario? Is that, we're staying at that, at the prior level? Is that correct?
Yeah, so this scenario would be additive, so we would be taking that funding that was in the reliability scenario and applying it towards the results.
Right, right. What I'm saying, though, is we don't seem to be getting real about water use efficiency, because we're now in the third scenario, and we're still only at another 200,000 a year over status quo on water efficiency. So I'm not seeing a, a real commitment to that. I mean, I, I mean, you're going to have to make a very strong case for why we'd be looking at groundwater, something like, like conjunctive use before we're investing in what's been the single most financially efficient way of enhancing our water supply. So I'm just, I'm a little concerned that we're in the third scenario, and we're still at a very, very modest increase in spending on our single most effective, most efficient, most affordable approach to water supply. So what's up?
What, th- th- these are great comments, and of course, we can, in anticipation of the next workshop, modify that and move some higher levels of investment. In that, I think what may make sense for us will be between this workshop and the next one, zeroing in on some areas. And for me, certainly distributed infrastructure and water use efficiency is one area we can zero in, and water recycling may be another area. So this is all good comments, and this is intended, we're in workshop two, we have two more workshops to go. So these will be integrated into subsequent workshops.
Okay, so part of what I'd like to also see integrated is, and I do think we, I think it would help for this to have some context, and I could be wrong about these numbers, but when Larry Russell and I joined this board, we were projected in 2022 to have a demand of 36,000 acre feet. That, that's my recollection. We're at now, what are we, Ben, are we 22,000? That's our demand right now?
Our annual average, I think it's a bit higher. Paul, do you know currently where we stand?
I think we're Good morning, we're, we're closer to 25,000.
Okay, 25, fine. So significantly less than where we were supposed to be now, and significantly less than where we were 15 years ago, notwithstanding growth. So I do think it's important that we take a more serious look at this, right? This is where we have put a very modest level of investment over the last 15 years with extraordinary results. And I, I absolutely agree with, you know, every single thing Alicia has said, these are things we need to do. The maintenance and the expansion of our investment in the system, I am, I am all in on that. But if we are getting real about water supply, I think we do need to look at where we have come, and how we have come there, and how we have managed to keep our rates relatively low by investing very modestly in water use efficiency. So I'm, I just have to express a little surprise that it, that is apparently, we're fairly far into this process, and that continues to be a very, very low priority for the management and staff in terms of recommending investment to the board. So I'd, I'd like to understand why that is and, and what's going on. And if you have not had the opportunity to really examine what we have achieved for our investments in that area compared with what we've achieved in other areas. So I'm, 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 I'm just concerned about that. You know, this is supposed to be, well, this is, it's a 10-year financial plan. And it's a plan with, you know, really miniscule investment, expanded investment in what's been one of our strongest and most important programs.
So I'll respond to that. One, I, I hear the, I guess, concern that what, we aren't going bigger there, what we do here and we can. Part of the challenge is, where would that money go? And what, we want to develop a plan, which Carrie, our manager of water use efficiency, is doing. And when we have a plan, and when the board were to say, we want to pilot this, we want to pilot that, the, the thought is, we adapt this plan and we move forward with it. It, it doesn't yet have tangible projects that support specific dollars. So it's a struggle to put in a dollar amount, excuse me, without clarity on where that money would be spent. So I, I am suggesting, Director Kohler, that between now and the next workshop, we would have a meeting or multiple meetings with the board on that specifically to really develop some structure to what enhanced investments look like, so we can fund it. But it's not intended to not have heard the board, or, you know, not follow the policy direction you're providing.
Okay, I appreciate that. I mean, it's just, I mean, I know a fair about conjunctive use, and we're spending a lot of money on recycling, and those are great options. They're also monumentally expensive compared to turf programs. I mean, all the programs that we are already discussing, right, that we just went through this when we've been talking about just this one year, and the programs that we might, you know, ramp up. There's, you know, there's turf, there's, you know, gray water, there's leak detection devices, there's irrigation controllers, there's, I mean, we certainly can move beyond giving people free showerheads at this point, the technology is there. It's, it really is just a matter of, you know, doing sort of a mini scenario exercise to figure out, you know, what money you'd want to spend on those programs. They're very well-developed, they're all over the West and California, there's plenty of precedents. We're not talking about breaking a lot of new ground here, I, in terms of getting those numbers. So I, I appreciate your commitment to doing that before this next meeting. But I am concerned that we're talking about far, far more expensive options for addressing water supply than the one options for addressing water supply than the ones right in front of us. So I I appreciate your commitment to doing that before the next meeting.
I agree with Cynthia on that completely. And remember also that what she's talking about, these items are one and done. You pay for them once and that's it. There's no ongoing maintenance. There's no additional cost down the road. You replace the turf, it's replaced. Now the customer may have to replace the turf twenty-five years from now, but it's not our problem.
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, I'll I'll echo with, but it's been being stated by both the directors and and I I think just in general seeing the cost, you know, what is the most cost-effective way to address water supply reliability? You know, if it is conjunctive use, like if there's a way to see comparative numbers so that we can obviously be driven by what is the most cost-effective way to achieve our desired outcome and conservation is is in general is is considered to be the most cost-effective way that to do that. So if we can focus on that for our next meeting, I think it'll help give us the information needed to to help prioritize where we see added investments.
So we we will do that. And along those lines, I'll even modify, I I think appropriately, my earlier comments that we'll we'll look at the work between now and the next workshop is focusing on water supply efforts, be it conservation, water recycling or others, and look at the return on the investments for the various initiatives. So we can really nail down, and of course it's timely with the drought we're in anyway to be doing that. So we we will take a a pretty deep dive and get in the details and identify the levels of investments that the board believes we should put into water supply and refine these scenarios for the next workshop.
Thanks. I I appreciate that, but I'd be careful about that term return on investments where we do, of course, need to be considering that, but we need to be considering that not differently for conservation than we do for, you know, replacing pipelines and storage tanks, right? I mean, we're doing these things to enhance the resilience of the system. So I'm going to urge you to stay away from ROI because those numbers are very squarely, they depend on thousands of factors beyond our control. You know, how are we investing? You know, what are, you know, what's what's going to be the municipal bond rate? I mean, I I wouldn't go down that rabbit hole. I really, if I were you. I don't think that's going to be constructive because the other piece of this is you know, are we building climate resilience? We can be looking at all sorts of options to address our water supply reliability that may be more or less expensive than others. But we know that some of these are going to be far more climate resilient than others. Some are going to make us a little bit more independent. They're going to make us, you know, better able to withstand drought than others. You know, when we may or may not be relying on, you know, the actions of of other water agencies, you know, if we're looking at at partnership scenarios. So I'm just saying, I I I would be very careful about that, especially over a ten-year period when there are so many things beyond our control. I would, I would keep it pretty straightforward, the way that you have for the other acid classes that you're looking at here. I wouldn't, I guess what I'm trying to say is, in my experience, water use efficiency is always held to a completely different standard of economic efficiency without really looking at what you're getting for what you're buying. And and I wouldn't do that here. I think that would be a mistake.
I agree with that. And as Larry Russell has pointed out many times, the the return on investment is is a little bit misleading because what you're getting is water forever. So it skews the return on investment numbers.
Right. And and I just, and the last thing I'll say about this is, and our record on this, and again, this is not a criticism of anybody who's been here before, and this is true, I think, for most water utilities in the West and certainly in California, but our record projection about what we would and would not save with different kinds of investments is abysmal. I mean, if you look back at what we thought we would be able to conserve, we have far, far, far exceeded that. So I would just be very a small C conservative in 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 how we look at this. And I, again, I would look at what we have done in the past and what we have been able to achieve with relatively low investments. You know, I remember being told early in my tenure that we couldn't possibly, you know, provide rebates for washing machines because it was going to be seven thousand dollars an acre foot, which was, of course, nonsense, but but that was the feeling at the time. And now we are with some success replacing, you know, high use of, you know, water, you know, water, washing machines. And, you know, like I say, I think the proof is in the pudding. We are now using far less water than we were fifteen years ago. And we have kept our our rates much lower than they otherwise would have been had we invested in far more expensive water supply options. So I just think we need to be realistic about those lessons and about that experience and bring that forward.
Okay, I I think we, thank you for the comments. I think we have a good feel for what we need to do between now and the next one in that regard.
Great.
Ben, I know you're trying to move on. I just wanted, I I just want to say a part, I want to highlight a part of what Cynthia just said, which is I I'd also like to see like, as Lisa just sort of indicated, if we get on replacing we our our maintenance with our our welded steel tanks, we can keep something to a coating project versus a a replacement. You know, I it would be very helpful to try to see our investments as being a penny wise versus pound foolish, get, you know, where that investment really pays now so that it saves us over time because we are looking out over time with this planning effort. So I think to the extent that you can also show financials into the future that show where we are most effectively saving us money down the road by getting on that work now, prioritizing that now would be would be helpful as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Are we ready to move on to our last scenario? Thinking yes. All right, Alicia.
Right, so our final scenario that we'll be talking about today, we've titled contemporary and proactive. And this scenario again is additive to our resilient scenario and really allows the district to modernize its water system to meet industry standards, address the demands of a warming climate, as well as prepare us for emergency events. The total cost for this scenario over the ten-year period is six hundred eighteen million dollars and allows us to develop a sustainable schedule to keep our infrastructure up to date. Increases our pipeline replacement to ten miles of pipeline per year, as well as replacement of all of our plastic service laterals. Allows us to have a focus on improving and waters and modernizing our water treatment processes. Allows for installation of smart meters to enhance customer service as well as increase our funding towards our wildfire fuel reduction program by twenty-five percent. And so there's an additional two hundred four million dollars that's needed to fund this scenario over the resilient scenario. And this two hundred four million dollars is spread across seven of our asset classes. With notable increases in funding to almost every single one of these asset classes with notable increase of sixty million dollars to our treatment plant asset class, over thirty million dollars to our pipelines and storage tank asset classes and twenty-eight million dollars towards our water supply asset class. So three projects that will be, that I'll highlight within this scenario include ozone, AMI, and the restoration of our West Peak. So the installation of ozone at both of our treatment plants for an additional cost of thirty-five million dollars will allow us to address taste and odor concerns, emerging water quality issues such as disperfection byproducts, as well as improving the satisfaction to our customers. The installation of AMI or smart meters to all of our services would allow for proactive leak identification, as well as water loss prevention across our service area. On our watershed, the West Peak Restoration Project would allow for us to implement this legacy worship project that has the potential to restore natural resources while improving visitor access to this historical site. And so before I move on, I mean, this is our last scenario. Are there questions specifically about this scenario?
So I have to ask, do you have any increase in the water efficiency piece or is this one again just holding its steady at two hundred thousand a year?
That's correct. The twenty-eight million dollars is notably dominated through the installation of AMI across our service area.
Okay, thanks. And 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 you're probably going to get into this, Melissa, so just stop me if this question is not yet appropriate, but the sixty, the two hundred, the additional two hundred and four million, this is you're not assuming this is all going to come from rates or, you know, or debt service, right? I mean, so for AMI. Okay, I'll.
Yeah, they'll dive into that.
Get most of that funded through through grants, but anyway.
Additional questions on this scenario?
Just on the plastic service lines, are those laterals to?
Yes. Yes, those are lateral. So that's a section of pipeline that takes place between the water main that lies in the street and the water meter that's usually in the sidewalk.
Okay, okay. So it's not from the meter to the to the structure?
No, the meter to the structure is considered consumer private piping.
Okay, okay, thanks.
I I did, I did want to, Alicia, briefly speak to President Kohler's comment and just share that in the financial assessment piece that's coming up next, we we do not incorporate grants into the funding. We've been wildly successful in the last number of years getting grants and we would expect that to continue. But it is difficult to anticipate and put them into a long-term plan.
I agree it's difficult. I agree that it's difficult to anticipate, but it is a long-term plan. So what we don't want to be is inaccurate, right? So we need to have a plan that is flexible enough that we are not gauging our actions on assumptions that are overly conservative, right? So I I think going forward, what we're going to want to be is reasonable, not not achieve some sort of unreasonable level of certainty. That's one of my concerns about water supply planning is that it values certainty, which is not always at at all in the range of reasonableness over what is reasonably likely to occur. So I I we need to be very careful about that, given that this is a long-term plan. And there's many things, obviously, that we're not going to be able to anticipate.
That's a good comment. Understood.
Okay, Alicia has one other slide. Oh, sorry, a couple more that does talk to future needs.
Yeah, so while the contemporary and proactive scenario does allow for the district to modernize its water system, it still leaves future needs and opportunities. And these needs and opportunities are identified infrastructure that's, you know, continued to be unfunded, even at the highest scenario of contemporary and proactive. And these future needs and opportunities have an additional cost of three hundred forty-seven million dollars. This cost is primarily dominated in our pipeline asset class of three hundred million dollars. But there's also thirteen million dollars in our water supply asset class that specifically target recycled water projects that were not included in the four scenarios that we just discussed. So to dive a little bit more specifically into the pipeline asset class, future needs, this really has to do with the three hundred miles of cast iron that's in our system today. And this cast iron was primarily installed within the nineteen fifties and nineteen sixties and will be reaching the end of its useful life during this ten-year period that we're talking about. The photo on the left shows one of these pipes from this period, a sixty-five-year-old cast iron pipe in Fairfax that failed prior to the end of its useful life. So there will be pipelines within this period that do fail either prior to the end of its useful life or right at the end. And this cast iron bubble is a future need that will continue to be unmet even in the contemporary and proactive scenario. So to just give a brief summary of what we've discussed today, briefly going over the four scenarios, the first one is the reactionary scenario. And this scenario allows us to maintain four percent increases to our rates and our capital maintenance fee. However, it only meets our current immediate needs. The next scenario, maintaining system reliability, allows us to invest in infrastructure upgrades and conservation programs to improve system reliability, as well as allowing us to invest in our wildland firefighting equipment. However, this scenario does not meet our current tank and pipeline needs. And there are no updates to the district's emergency operations center. Moving towards resilience, the next scenario allows us to establish a sustainable asset replacement schedule for some of our assets to address our backlog of needs. However, in some of these asset classes, our needs continue to grow. So for example, in our tank, in our storage tank asset class, the moving towards resilient scenario would allow for a sustainable asset recoding schedule for our welded steel tanks, which comprise two-thirds of the tanks in our system. However, the remaining third tank, the bolted steel tanks and the riveted tanks would not be addressed within this resilient scenario. Also, future conditions such as climate change are not addressed. So emerging taste and odor issues that may arise from climate change would not be addressed within this scenario. The contemporary and proactive scenario will allow us to modernize the district's water system and address the demands for a warming climate and improve watershed conditions. However, as you can see, there's a significant increase to our rates that would be required for this scenario. And so with that, I'm going to pass this presentation back over to Melissa. Thank you.
Let's, let's hear from our board about questions and comments and then Terry heads up. I'll I want to check and see if we have any public comment that needs to be added.
I think I've I've made all of my comments already. Any other comments from the board? Maybe I'll just add that I do want to thank Alicia and the team for putting this together. These are very crisp and clear. It's the, it's a great presentation, really laying out what you're proposing, the, you know, the way that you're planning to or proposing to, you know, increase spending over these asset classes and in these scenarios. So that's very helpful. I think it's also really helpful the way you've laid it out. I think, Melissa, you may have said this earlier. I I can already see sort of different ways to move some of these modules around. So I would encourage my my friends on the board. I I don't think we have to take each of these scenarios as a whole thing. I think we can definitely, you know, mix and match somewhat. You know, depending on, you know, where everybody lands on priorities, but I I just really do want to take a minute to commend the Ben and his team and Alicia in particular for putting this together in such a, an understandable and accessible way.
Thank you.
So New York Times had an article, Biden administration is going to unveil a three trillion dollar infrastructure plan. But it's a, it's a daunting prospect even to come up with, you know, the type of money we're talking about here. So that that's kind of what I'm focused on and and as well as the resilience piece that that Director Kohler has been harping on, which is so important and it's been proven over time to be our most effective and efficient means of of meeting our supply. So we we definitely have our work cut out for us.
Is there any consideration in our planning here for what we may do with in joint efforts with other agencies? The North Bay Water Reuse Association is always looking to to add projects and to work in collaboration with the other agencies around the bay. So if we haven't looked at that, I think that that should be incorporated. There's opportunity there is the bottom line.
Okay. Yeah, and I I think that will Director Gibson fall into the water supply specific that will have subsequent with the board drilling into both the water recycling as well as water use efficiency in context of our water supply levels of investments going forward. So I look forward to those discussions.
Could I just?
Yes.
Make one more comment. It it just seems some of the codes, maybe even the state plumbing code, really needs to be reformed. I mean, if we're really looking at getting into the teeth of climate change, you know, we're going to need to make some regulatory changes that that address the reduction of supply.
Yeah, and I I think when we talk about water supply, staff has been looking at various district policies that the board could think about that address those directly. For example, if there's a new development coming, and this is just one example, but we'll bring this to the discussion. Should we even allow turf if we wanted to go to the extreme? But that's the sort of discussion that will be integrated into those subsequent presentations that staff will bring to the board on water supply, water use efficiency. presentations that staff will bring to the board on water supply, water use efficiency, recycling, and the variety of strategies that we can look at.
Yeah, I just want to say that I I agree with Larry on that, and I believe that will be coming. I mean, we saw a wave of that in the 90s when, you know, low water toilets were mandated in in California in the plumbing code. And it's been the single most effective water supply reliably measured the state has ever seen. And that's that's just considered passive conservation because, you know, we're not doing anything. Pretty soon, the I think I think we're at the point now where you can only buy certain types of indoor appliances. But we, you know, we haven't, we haven't seen an update of that kind of thing for a while. And I believe Larry's correct. I think that is coming. And when it is, we should be part of it. But I think that is outside of the kind of 10 year financial planning that we're doing here.
Okay, Terry, do we have any public comments that we need to add?
If I can, I think I saw earlier Mimi Willard. Let me ask her. Ms. Willard, can you?
Yes. A few quick things. Number one, thank you for correcting me that yes, indeed, there is a PowerPoint on your website. I apologize. Number one, Director Bragman raised a really good general issue, which is the national picture relative to infrastructure. And I'm hoping maybe at the next workshop or so, there might be a little bit of a delve into whether there might be outside sources of funding for really big projects. I mean, obviously, if we had a dam fail, we'd be hard pressed to replace it with outside funding. And I guess the question is whether there might be some sources of funding to pre prevent failure of, you know, critical parts of our infrastructure. Number two, we're seeing a big push for multi unit housing through the county coming down to us from the state and the metropolitan planning organizations. And I'm hoping you might have some thought in this to what that means for the demands on the system and how you intend to handle that. Do we have adequate supply? And if not, what are the ways for dealing with that? Would you be able to? Would you be allowed to? Would you want to have a higher capital contribution required for hookup for the multi unit housing? Because it might possibly actually require us to have additional supply, which is very costly. Also, I think maybe if it hasn't been done, there should be a reexamination of individual metering in large multi unit housing complexes in order to provide incentives for the residents themselves to be to conserve, recognizing that multi unit housing is more consumption efficient than individual homes, but still there should be a conservation incentive. Third thing is, could you please define what you mean in one of your slides about improving watershed conditions? Maybe elaborate a little bit more on what you have in mind there. And finally, where is recreation in this planning? I saw it on one of the slides, but what exactly is in is in mind in terms of additional investment in recreation and what is the cost and the funding source for that? Thank you.
Thank you.
I can start and Alicia, maybe you can help me out in some of the responses. On the recreation aspect, I we're currently beginning the scoping effort to develop recreation. And from that there likely will be opportunities and projects identified that are focused on both user conflict issues, but also very much how to ensure high quality water supply and the diversity that we have on the watershed, the biodiversity in context of the many, many visitors, over 2 million a year visitors that we get. So that'll emerge through that process. Alicia, can you talk about the watershed components and the higher levels of investment, what we're getting, if you have that information?
Yeah, certainly. And Sean, if I miss any details, feel free to contribute as well, but specifically for the watershed improvements, we're looking at, one example would be sanitation upgrades to our Lake Lagunitas parking lot to accommodate the increased use in visitors to that area of our watershed. We're also going to be doing things such as road to trail improvements to increase the quality or or transfer some of the roads to trails to to reduce the erosion of our stream to excuse me, to reduce the erosion and protect the water quality. We'll also be doing things like I mentioned, the West Peak restoration to increase the the various visitors to that historical site and protect the natural sensitive resources that take place there. And we'll also be doing like seeps and strings restoration and forest restoration to areas such as Potrero Meadows. And let me see what else am I leaving out here?
So the bulk of the investments are really focused on wildfire resilience water quality in context of the recreational activities that take place. I also just wanted to know, you asked, I believe, about outside findings. We are currently doing a theme of vulnerability assessment that's going to identify opportunities, but also well positioned agency to get additional. We will be updating the board on Friday's operation on our grant program. And we recently submitted, I believe it was close to a $3 million grant that we're pretty hopeful on that will be towards first health and reduce fuel reduction that will really take us a big step forward grant funded in terms of wildfire mitigation and some of the fuel reduction activities. So there's a lot going on there.
And just wanted to check Director Bragman, your hand's been up. I'm not sure if that's just residual hand raise. Okay, great, great. I wanted to ask the board if they'd like to take a short.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. I still have more. Yeah, no, no worries. I have also Larry Minickies. Go ahead, sir. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I'm dry. I'm at a red light. I'm getting my my vaccine this morning, so I had to cut out. But what I wanted to say with cast iron, because it's a big deal with 300 miles of it, is I suggest doing some sort of comparative where you look at the rate of return failure, the projected rate of future failure, the cost to repair those failures and what would be saved by replacing those pipes and and not waiting for them to fail. Because as I understand, just the fines alone that we're paying for water going into this into the sewer is higher than the repairs themselves. And that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I have Dave Kramer. Mr. Kramer? You should unmute yourself.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Just wanted to ask one question. You mentioned smart meters being something that we're looking at. On a larger scale, are we pretty happy with the functioning of our control systems as far as being able to do early leak detection?
That, Mr. Kramer, that is an interesting question, and that is leak detection broadly within our transmission system is an area where there's a lot of work going on in the industry, and we are currently engaged in an effort to look at the sort of leak detection activities we have and even enhance those if there's opportunity. We believe there are. We have a pretty good leak detection program in terms of where we stand in terms of the industry. We have acoustic sensors that are out there in the field with a dedicated crew that identifies leaks in an ongoing fashion and we find quite a lot. But there's still a fair amount of, we called it, call it unbilled water or leaked water, and some of it's a variable meters. But in any system like ours, you do have ongoing leaks. So it is a good point in that we really are looking at leak detection as a component of water use efficiency and water supply. And with the drought, that's even enhanced that interest that we have to enhance and improve our program going forward.
Thank you, Ben.
And then I believe Mr. Roberts wanted to say something, but I just want to double check. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, I do. And Cynthia, I'm completely on board with water use efficiency measures. And what I would add to your comment is that it would be useful, I think, if a figure could be determined about what it would cost to increase water use efficiency main aimed primarily at irrigation, of course, not only to include turf but gray water and see what that investment might require.
Okay. Thank you for that, Roger. I have no further comments.
Thank you, Terry. So do we need a five minute break? Or do you all want to press on? I'm seeing some head nods. Yes.
Let's take a five minute break.
Five minute break. Great. Board directors, we can't start without you. So you're in control. Bing, Terry?
Got it.
All right, next up, we have the financial impacts and Chuck is going to handle this part of the presentation. I think Chuck will go through all of the the different scenarios and then get feedback.
Thank you, Melissa. Good morning, President Kohler and directors. So now we've taken all of these models that Alicia has shown you, and we plug these into a financial model to see what the financial implications would be. And we've worked with Raftellus and specifically Steve Gagnon and his team. He's on the call this morning, and they've helped us to build out a 10 year model, put everything that we know about now and into the next 10 years on the operating and the capital side. And then it allows us to plug these scenarios in and see what what kind of demands that we would have for resources. So we had to make some assumptions going forward on the model. The capital spending models that you saw, we allocated those evenly over 10 years, not necessarily a a realistic assumption. We would ladder a lot of these things based on whether we're going pay go or debt and based on staff capacity. Someone had asked about escalators that we use, and we built a number of them into the model. When dealing with salaries, we escalated those at 3% a year. So we have baseline cola increases plus step increases, some other things that make that seem like a pretty valid escalation. Benefits, we escalated 5%. And then capital projects, we we escalated those at 4% a year over the life of each of these forecasts. You remember, looking back last year, the last March, the the E and R escalator was over 5%. So I think 4% is a pretty conservative escalator for capital projects. We assume that the capital maintenance fee will remain capped at 4% for modeling purposes, but we do in these models escalate other other rates to see what kind of resources are available. And then we had to build in some debt financing into the model. So when we do that, we assume that it begins in 2024. We have a 30 year term on that debt, and it's 5% interest. And again, a conservative approach there. So another thing I'd like to point out as we go through these models is, that's okay, you're fine. Is it's a it's a it's kind of, there's a continuum of options that we have here. So what we're going to show you here are just one of many models. And we kind of bookended this where where for most of these scenarios, except the first one, we'll show you what we would have to do with rates only to get to where we needed to be. And then we'll show you what happens if we introduce debt into that and kind of smooth out those cash flows. Again, those are just two snapshots. You know, we built this 10 year model. We can run, you know, any scenario that we can that we can think of, but this is just to kind of give you a feel for what the magnitude is of these different scenarios. So this is the reactionary. And again, this ties out to what you have in the existing capital improvement program. And we assume here that we are throughout the life of the forecast adjusting revenues at 4% a year and CMF escalates at 4% a year. And you can kind of see what this does to us. So the point to note here in each of these is you have a couple of things going on. The big blue line there are our fund balances totals in the fiscal year. We begin in the first year, starting on July 1st of '23, and then we go through fiscal year '33. So that aligns 10 year horizon with our next with our next rate setting. So the green line that you see in the middle there, that assumes that's the line for 25% of operating maintenance budget in reserves, plus your other reserves like the pension reserve that you have, rate stabilization reserve. So that's kind of what we consider kind of our minimum bar to hit that 25% line. And then that upper gray bar you see there is the 50% of operating maintenance budget reserve plus other reserves. And just remember that our policy is is six month of reserves. So that gray line is that is that six month bar or target. And so what we've tried to do with these scenarios is choose options where we maintain that minimum or the green bar of 25%. And then some of these we by design have dipped below that for a few years, but we we always come up, come back up above that 25% level. And then we are targeting that six month level. And as part of this discussion, at some point, we may decide that maybe 50% of O and M reserves are too high, maybe 25% is more adequate. So the absolute minimum here, you can see that we that we we build up our fund reserves over the years to where in the final year of the forecast in 2033, we're right about hitting that 50% of reserves, and we are funding that $256 million of capital projects that we now have. Next slide, please. Now we move on to the next scenario where we added about $63 million. We built it up $319 million there in capital projects over the 10 years. And this we look at without adding any debt into the financing. So you can see that we make some assumptions. And in the in the in the box at the right there, you can see what we do with revenue adjustments. We keep capital maintenance fee constant at 4%, but we make some revenue adjustments in the first years of model, relatively modest adjustments. We have to add 9% revenue adjustment in 2024. We we raised rates by 8% in 2025 for the model purposes. And then we stabilize everything back at 4% for the rest of the forecast. As I mentioned before, you can see here that, you know, by design, we dip below that 25% green line there for several years. But then 230, 2030, we come back to that line with this with this model, and then we start to climb above our 25% reserve level, and we start approaching the target level 50% in the final year of the forecast in 2033. Next slide, please. Now we take the same scenario and we add in debt. So what we want to do here is kind of, as I said, smooth out those cash flows and kind of mitigate the effects on our on our rate adjustments. So what we did here is we took several projects. So, you know, you took like the San Geronimo Treatment Plant Clarifier, North Warren Line, clumped a few of those projects together and got 25 $25 million debt package. We could issue that 30 year debt at 5%. And then we look at what that does to our model, and you can see right away now your revenue adjustments have been brought down. They're now 7% in 2024, 6% in '25 and '26, those are fiscal years. And then the model goes back to 4% for the remainder. And there you can see with with debt again towards the the long end of our horizon out through 2031 to '33, you can see that we climb above that green line and we're stepping towards that target reserve 50% over time. You can also see how this kind of smoothes out cash flows over those over those first years of the You can also see how this kind of smoothes out cash flows over those, over those first years of the, of the financial model. Next slide, please. So now we're stair stepping up through the scenarios. This is moving toward resilience. So here we're adding an additional $95 million in projects to bring us to $414 million approximately. And we're looking at what this is going to do, first of all, without debt. And you can see here that the, the, you know, the way that we ran the model with the increases in the, in the first years of the model takes pretty onerous increases to get to where we want to be. We're increasing by 20% in 24 and 25% in 2025. And then we let the model return to 4% normal rate increases for the remainder of the horizon. And you can see here that we, we dipped well below our 25% for in the first years. And then 2030, we started to come back out. And then we rapidly hit the 50% reserve line at the end of forecast in 2033. So again, we wanted to take this scenario and make some assumptions on debt. So let me have the next slide, please. And here we, here we do a larger debt issuance. We do $55 million in debts. We're just grabbing larger projects and more of them and issuing 30 year debt and then seeing what that does to the model. And here you can see, as you saw previously, you know, as soon as you start adding debt into this, you start mitigating the needed rate increases. So in this model with $55 million of debt over 30 years, we're able to bring that first year increase in 24 down to 11%. 11% in 25, 7% in 26, and then after 29, we did 5% increases before going back to the 4% normalized increases in 2030. And here you can see that again, we, you know, we dipped below the line a little bit in 27 or 26 through 29 there. And then we started climbing back up. So that by 2031, 32, we're exceeding our 25% minimum target reserves and we're heading toward that target 50%. Next slide, please. So now we get into contemporary and proactive. So that was an additional $204 million in projects for a total of 618. This starts to get much more difficult, you know, from a modeling perspective. So here with no debt, you can see that we had to go 40% increase in 24, 16% in 25. And you can see even with doing that, we fall well below in those first years, that green line. It's our 25% O and M reserve. And it takes us out till 2031 until we, until we hit that line. So now again, we took that same scenario on that slide, please. And we built in a very large debt package here, $225 million. And, you know, that probably not a realistic package, but we wanted to see what that would do with the model. And so, so here we can bring, we can, we can meet those minimum target, those minimum reserve requirements, 25%. And then we start to outside beyond the horizon of model, we'll start to move towards that 50% level. And here we can bring the revenue adjustments down to 17% in 24, 15% in 25, 14% in 26, 8% in 27. And then for this particular run of the model, we had to leave increases in the out years, 2028 beyond at 5%. So this just gives you an idea of as we start to stair step through these scenarios, what they require in terms of rates and debt financing. We did not build into the model, as Ben had mentioned earlier, any assumptions on grants, just because for modeling purposes, we have to be fairly certain that those financial resources would actually materialize, put them in here. So if we don't, if we're uncertain about that, we leave those out of the model. And that is, that's the financial section for you. Next slide, please.
Well, I think Chuck, before we, we go on to larger discussion, I want to make sure we address any questions on the financial pieces. I'm happy to flip the slides to something you want to dive into a little bit more. Questions from the directors?
Um, I have a couple of quick comments. I appreciate from Ben that you guys are, your first rollout at this was not looking at the opportunity for grants. So I think when you come back to us, I'd like to see, you know, how these numbers change, if at all, if you assume either that we are successful achieving the same level of grant support or actually increase it. I have to say, as I look at what's happening over the federal landscape, I believe there will be opportunities. And I want to be clear, this is mostly going to be, you know, what we pay for locally. There's no question about that. But I do think that the scenarios could change if we assume at a minimum, the level of grant support we're getting now. I do see, everything I'm seeing is that those trends are going to increase, especially for things like treatment facilities and AMI. I don't know if you've had a chance, Chuck or Ben, to look at the recent Rescue Act, but there is a boatload of money for local utilities, you know, through the current programs. And I believe that AMI is going to continue to be prioritized by EPA. And I think that we're also seeing a trend in the SRF, what's been a loan program. I think it will continue, but we're also seeing some real pressure for that to convert to grants for things like AMI. So I think it would be useful to see a couple of scenarios, either where you are assuming a current level of continued grant support and, you know, kind of a, you know, wishful thinking level that it, that it could reasonably go to. I don't know that it'll have a huge impact on the, on the numbers here, but I think it will have some. Is that, is that something that, I mean, I know Raftellus is, has got, is more than capable of doing that. But I'm just curious, Chuck, what do you think about that?
Yeah, I think as long as we, you know, build in some reasonable assumptions, you know, again, if we're going to model them, we're going to be somewhat conservative, but we can take a look at that and, you know, see what we think's reasonable and build that into a, into one of the scenarios to see what it looks like. Absolutely.
Great, great. I would ask for two. Like I say, something that's sort of steady state and something that is a little more expansive. We are looking at 10 years and I think we, we need to be thinking a little more, you know, a little more creatively. So I appreciate the instinct for conservatism in modeling, but because we're, we're going, you know, this is public. You know, as soon as you start telling the public, we're talking about 17% rate increases or 25% increases. It becomes very tangible. You know, it's not an intellectual exercise. So I think, you know, I'm, I'm really interested in seeing scenarios that are realistic as opposed to really biased on the conservative, less realistic end of the spectrum. I mean, that's, that's my concern about the approach that I've seen, at least so far in water, water forecasting. So I don't, I don't know if the Raftellus folks want to address that. I understand the reason for the conservatism. I'm just saying that's not what this exercise is. This is a 10 year plan.
Yeah. So I was just going to say that what we've done for a couple of other clients is that usually they look out a handful of years and they've got a couple of grants in mind and they know how much they think they're going to get. And we multiply that by the probability they think that they will get that grant. So for example, they may say, well, we've got this $10 million grant in line or in mind. And we think there's at least a 50% chance that we'll get it. So we'll simply take 10 million times 0.5 and we assume they're going to get 5 million.
Fair enough. Okay. I'm just saying, I think, I think that would be great. And I'd also like to see something that's a little more optimistic because I do think that the board needs that to come to a conclusion about how to go forward because let's be clear. I mean, yes, this is a long-lived board, but my expectation is that there will be other boards. And it is rare in my experience for a 10 year plan to be implemented over the 10 years exactly as it was anticipated in year one. And so I just think we need to be a little more creative in our thinking about where we might be 10 years from now. My recollection is that we are nowhere near where we are now, that we thought we would be 10 years ago or 15 years ago. So I just want us to keep that, that humility, that humbleness in mind as we're, we're thinking and that we are not overly erring on the side of caution and missing the opportunity to be more optimistic in our planning. Does that, I realize what I'm saying is heresy if you are a financial analyst. So I, I am unburdened by that since my, that's not my background, but I'm hoping you guys will be willing to work with us on that.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
And just keep in mind though, too, and not to be too much of a pessimist here, as a financial person. The one thing that we don't capture, the one thing, you know, we also don't capture some, you know, detrimental events that, you know, could have an impact on those reserve levels.
Sure.
You know, the upcoming drought, that's something we also have modeled in here. So it's
Right, right.
A little bit of balancing act.
Right.
I guess along those lines, you know, I, 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 to sort of feel the, you know, plan for, for good things to happen, but be prepared for bad things to happen. I don't know if we've ever forecasted what would be the costs of a major wildfire event. I mean, by all, by all expert, you know, assessments, it is sadly a matter of when, not if we are going to have some sort of major event. I would like us to be prepared in every way that we can, including, do we have a, could we estimate what it is? That it would be a big hit in terms of our costs in order to get people's service back up and running or, or all the impacts that we might likely face. And to see what that, that's what we need to be thinking about.
Yeah, I agree with that. The other quick point I was going to make before I turn things over is I really wanted to commend Chuck and the Raftellus folks who put this together for their thinking about debt. I think water utilities and we are not that different, can be very anxious about debt. I'm a big believer in debt and especially for this particular kind of a plan. I don't know how much we've talked about generational equity, but I think it's an enormously important concept and one that we need to do a really, I think we need to be very intentional about talking about that to the public, right? We are, I mean, I really agree, Monte, with the points that you've been making about, you know, wanting to catch up and wanting to make sure that we're, you know, doing what we need to be doing on our pipeline and, you know, other facilities maintenance. At the same time, I think we do have to recognize that the investments we're making today are going to last for decades. And there is not necessarily a need to be burdening today's rate payers, you know, with the cost of these improvements that will last, you know, as we've seen in the past for, you know, literally generations. So I think that is a very strong ethical, not only financial argument for debt, even though it can look scary. I just wanted to put that thought out there for my, my fellow board members and for the public consideration because I do think for the kinds of things that we're talking about, it really does make sense to be looking at debt, especially now when rates, I mean, you know, the Raftellus folks and Chuck, you can tell me if I'm wrong about this, but in my experience, rates have never been lower and we should be taking advantage of that to the maximum extent we can.
Absolutely. Debt, debt is a tool and we shouldn't ignore it.
Yeah, I agree with what Cynthia, the point you made. I think it's, it's spot on. We, these are long-term investments that future generations will, will want and need. So I usually do not like debt in many other circumstances, but I think in this case, it makes a lot of sense, especially given the current rates.
One thing I think we need to factor in, right now we're paying $10 million a year about in debt service. And, and I brought this up to Chuck and Ben before, but we really need to be looking to refinance our existing debt because if rates remain low, which they probably will, we could garner significant savings. I mean, if we were able to cut the rate in half, we, we might be able to free up $4 to $5 million a year, which would have an impact on rates. The other thing about debt financing is, you know, this is a significant pivot from where the board went just three years ago. I happen to agree with it. I think, you know, on these long-term generational projects, it makes ultimate sense to spread out the burden over, over years, but it is a pivot. And I just think we need to be looking at both sides of the ledger. I think we need to be looking at costs, especially costs of money because that's been driving our rates and our budget for the last three years. So I think we need to remain very nimble and, and flexible when it comes to debt financing. So I guess I throw my hat into, to using more debt financing.
This is Larry Russell. I spoke directly with Jim from Sperry Financing about this issue. What he explained to me is that the refinance that we just did is a done deal. It kicks in in 2024. There is no option that he's aware of to redo it other than to throw the towel in and basically pay all of the fees for nothing. So I can pass on Jim's contact information. You feel free to talk to him. It's a great idea. But, you know, when you hedge things, sometimes you're right and sometimes you're wrong.
I think you're, I think we're stuck until 2024.
Well, it's beyond 2024. 2024 is just when it starts. You know, Morgan Stanley is bought all the bonds that we sold.
I just want to, just given time, guys, I just want to keep us focused on this plan though. I mean, I totally hear what you're saying about the refinancing, but I, if you guys are okay. I know Melissa's concerned about the time. So I just, I, I think we probably are going to have our best conversation focusing on, on that, if that's okay.
Thank you, Director Kohler. I know we have some public comments I've been alerted to. Maybe we can grab those and then I'd like to go back to the board and see if we can get some consensus around the scenarios and your thoughts on those moving forward. Terry?
Yes. So the first person I have is Mr. Roger Roberts.
Yes, sir. Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Are we wedded to a 30 year debt funding with even payments? There may be other options out there that can help to smooth out your cash flow. Another thought is that if we have shovel-ready projects, and I don't know what it would cost to have shovel-ready projects, but once they're shovel-ready, then you're in a much better position to apply for and receive grants. So there may be some merit in developing shovel-ready projects in order to be able to take advantage of those opportunities. And then lastly, in terms of other sorts of financing, you ought to look into whether or not sale and leasebacks of some of your assets make sense. I know that's not normal for public utilities, but it may help you reduce your financing requirement on a straight debt basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The next person is Ms. Mimi Willard.
Yes. First of all, I would like to compliment Chuck and team for the scenario analysis. It's really great. It's the first time at least that I've seen it used so nimbly at MMWD. So kudos on that. Director Schmidt raises a very good question about the wildfire cost. I'm not really sure how you can handle that in the modeling, but I think clearly it needs to be part of the discussion both internally and with the public, the cost both to the system, if there's major infrastructure damage, but also the, the environmental cost. I also would like to compliment Director Kohler for bringing up this issue of generational issue, generational equity. This is one near and dear to our heart at cost. We are quite concerned about the affordability of living in Marin to the next generation. So spread it use, the use of debt to produce generational equity is a plus. I do think though, as Director Bradman pointed out, you do have a messaging problem here. And it's not to say that you can't say, no, well, we've, we've had to rethink and we got to do the new thing. But when you approve the last set of rates, which only really hit people's inbox, mailbox in terms of their bills in September of 2019, we were told at that time that we're going 100% to PEGO. We don't like debt anymore. And that's essentially the reason for the big round of rate increases in the implementation of the capital maintenance fee. So there's some thinking to be done there. Two more other things quickly. Number one, we did have a meeting with Chuck and Ben around the, that included a discussion of debt. And we repeat this, the, the offer that you might meet with one specifically on the Specifically on the topic of debt with our expert advisor. Who has no extra Brian in this, but has some really good insights into the ways that one can use municipal debt and maybe will find some way out of your box. That Director Russell brought up. And finally. Regarding what happens from here. If you're looking at the possibility of grants and some other unknowns, it really raises the question of. What's the timeframe for what we're trying to do with this workshop project? Is the goal to approve a CIP, a 10-year capital improvement plan for 10 years? When would that vote be? And is that kind of teeing up a subsequent? Just one more sentence on this. So the, the goal there being that. If you don't have a really neutral timeframe, you may want to stretch out your decision-making on the CIP. Until you're able to get a little bit more info on. Grants and other moving parts of this that are really going to be critical to your plan. Thank you.
Thank you. I see no further comments.
Thank you, Terry, and thank you for those, those comments that we received. We'd like to, in our last little break there, I, I heard. I heard consensus around the potential for debt financing and then also taking a look at some. More creative ways, I think, of financing us, as how we might put that. Grants were mentioned as well. I'd like to see if we can find some consensus around one or two of the scenarios or. Are there things that you want to, and/or I should say, are there things that you want to make sure is included? And we did have quite a bit of discussion about water efficiency and recycling and there was. Ben commented on that, that that will be taken a look at and we'll definitely be bringing that piece back. But what are your thoughts, you know, as we look at the eight drivers that are on the screen? And recognizing that many of these conflict with each other and some of them you're not in absolute control of. What are your thoughts about the four scenarios that you saw and, and whether any of those are feeling like a reasonable fit, maybe with some modifications?
I think my instinct is that we probably need to land on some version of the fourth scenario with modifications. I was actually a little surprised that the three scenarios file, you know, following the steady state scenario. Don't really directly address climate change and it seems to me that. We cannot reasonably be talking about a 10-year investment plan that does not start from that as a foundational. Issue that really has to drive a great deal of our decision-making. So, you know, I, I had some other thoughts, but I just want to start there and I, I don't necessarily mean, in fact, I don't mean that that means we would just go with. Scenario for without modifications. I think, I think there's a certain amount, as I mentioned earlier, of mixing and matching. That makes sense. I think there's probably some investments. That are proposed for scenario for that could go on a, you know, a longer. You know, timeframe than the 10 years or be removed from the 10-year plan. I mean, I think, I think I'd need to see more details to, you know, kind of. Get into that with, with that level of granularity. But I do think that the, that overall bringing, putting the district on a path to be dealing in a more intentional and direct way with the realities of climate change. And I don't remember exactly how we should put it, you know, bringing, bringing us up to industry standards. I think that's where we need to go. And then I think the, the devil is in the details. You know, I, for example, as much as, I mean, I'm, I'm on the mountain as, as much as I think as any of the directors, maybe more than some. I'd love to see the West Peak restoration. I'm not sure, given everything else, that I would make that a first priority. You know, in a 10-year plan. So that, just as an example, is something that, you know, that I'd like to, you know, where, where I think we've got some flexibility. In that fourth scenario. On the other hand, you know, the point about. You know, getting AMI in that I would think we would need to do very quickly. That's going to give us our biggest. You know, bang for our buck rather than dragging that out for, for a longer period of time. Anyway, I'll, I'll, I'll just pause there and see what the other directors are thinking.
I see Director Bragman's hands up.
It wasn't really intended. I, I'm not quite as. Aggressive on it, you know, I would say, you know, I'm more in line with the. Second scenario where it's, you know, a maybe 25% increase. And see if we can, you know, cut some of, you know, see if we can get some. Creative financing that makes sense to take care of it. I, I, at this point. Think it's kind of an overreach to put the type of aspirational planning. Or to, to consider the scenario for, which is clearly a pretty aspirational plan. As a realistic financial plan. So. You know. Especially coming out of COVID, I think, you know, we already three years ago, two years ago instituted. Quite. A radical change in how we build our services. And I just, you know, I think there's a limit to how much you can ask of folks and. You know, I think that's driving all of us to take another look at debt financing. Which, you know, spreads out the cost. Most of our rate payers, you know. Are more interested in receiving a reasonable bill on a, on a monthly or bimonthly basis. Than they are on rebuilding legacy projects, however worthy. So. Right now, you know, I'm, I'm kind of looking at scenario two as being the most realistic. And that would depend on really. How Chuck and others in finance can, can. Figure out how to, how to pay for it all.
Just one, really just quick thing to respond to Larry. So I'm looking at scenario four, but not assuming that that's going to be the number we're gonna wind up with. So I'm sorry if I wasn't clear about that. I, I, there's two ways to look at these scenarios. There's what do you want to do? And then there's how much is it gonna cost? So just, just to be clear, my, my thinking about scenario four is that we would only be able to get there if we were able to modify it such that. We were able to bring the cost down significantly. That's, that was kind of where I was getting at with picking and choosing. Which of the, you know, which of the different elements of it we would need to go with. So, sorry, sorry, Jack, you were gonna say.
No, that's, 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 that's a good clarification, you know. I think what was the term Ben used was not, not reactionary management, but. We have to be flexible because it's going to be very tough to really predict where our priorities are gonna land.
Adaptive.
Adaptive, yeah. Good word.
Yeah, the other direction you're looking for now is, is difficult to determine without. More input on what we think we might be able to do with the debt financing. And also what we might be able to do with. Grant funding, especially if we look at some, the mutual possibilities with working with collaboratively with other agencies. There's potential there. And without that knowledge, we're sort of walking blind.
I mean, I do think the exercise is important for us to prioritize, you know, certain projects. That, that's the one thing that, you know, it's, it's really kind of put front and center. Is raising the profile of some of our bigger challenges in the system.
In the famous words of Donald Rumsfeld. We don't know what we don't know. And I think that's where we are with climate change. I think adaptive is a good term. I think we really need to turn our antenna up and get out of the mold of anything to do with the past. Because I think, you know, you can't look at rainfall and say, well, it, it used to rain 60 inches. No. This is almost like starting the new database from scratch. Saying, let's see where it goes and keeping our ears open and our noses the grindstone because. There's just so many things that could happen here that I, I don't think are predictable. I mean, for instance, what if this high that we're experiencing now, not, not, not social high, but pressure, air pressure high. Stays in place over Utah and those places and just keeps pushing our storm south. You know, or north. I mean. This, this situation could get real hard, real fast. And I completely agree with Cynthia's approach and. The, the idea that we need to really, really, really focus on the low hanging fruit. And the easy things to do in addition to the long-term good engineering policies. That provide us with a backup water supply if we need it.
I'll just weigh in that I think, you know, this is, this is complicated and, and it is difficult. And, you know, we would like to be able to say we are, you know, our, our current, our current rate structure. And, and funding is sufficient to meet all our needs. And, but I, I don't think anybody looking at this presentation can say that we're, what we currently have is, is meeting the needs. Into the, into the future and, and those, and those needs are now because if we don't deal with it now, we are putting it off. Onto the next generation that will have. An even greater burden and I don't think that that's fair. I do think, you know, Larry, to your point with the past, we can't look at the past as an indicator of the future, but we can model the future. We have got to make decisions that are informed on what are projections for future weather patterns. And I think that we can run scenarios. That will allow us to, to see how our water supply reliability is impacted by future. You know, long-term changes in our precipitation patterns. And if that's what it means to be, you know. Prepared for climate change and responsive to climate change, then I think we ought to do that because we know climate change is going to happen. It is happening. And so we need to deal with it. We'll either deal with it well today or we'll deal with it more difficulty down the road. And I just think also when it comes to, you know, our, the infrastructure that is aging. That has a backlog of repairs and maintenance that we need to do. I believe we need to close that gap. Or again, we are pushing this off onto future generations to have to deal with at a more expensive level. And I do not think that that's fair. So I, I don't have it, I don't have an answer about which of the scenarios. I, I would, I think honestly, right now the scenarios are, these are very helpful, but I think I would. Look for a different pairing of scenarios that address some of the things that Cynthia mentioned in terms of what is most. Cost-effective in terms of conservation investments that buy us a lot of water supply reliability, especially in dry year scenarios. Looking at what are the low-hanging must-need safety things like, you know, that. The Director Bragman was mentioning in terms of, these are just things that we need to get on now soon because they, they buy us this kind of water supply reliability that, that we need as soon as possible. But also look at what, what are the, the repairs or the replacements that we need to do now because. They will be so much more expensive to do into the future. So I, I think it'd be really helpful to get some thought to how to recast some of these scenarios. In order to come up with some things that basically, I think ultimately we need to be able to explain to folks if we are, if, if, if the cost of water is going to go up, we need to be able to explain why. And, and I think that we've done a lot in these scenarios to help that, but I think we can do it maybe a little bit more sharper.
In degree more, Monte.
Yeah, I, I agree too, and, and I'm agreeing with what everybody's saying. So one, let me, let me put out a suggestion because I, I feel that. I feel that the board needs more information about some of the particulars that are being proposed in the scenarios. What I'm hearing is the kind of evolving idea around a fifth scenario that's, that's a bit of an amalgam. And. I think it would be useful for us to have before the next kind of workshop on the plan. Maybe a deeper dive on the, on the particular items, you know, maybe not every single one. But on, you know, a number of them that are driving costs and what we're really talking about, you know. So for example, you know, I think a big piece of the cost for scenario for is, I, I think I mentioned the West Peak Restoration like that. We don't necessarily have to do that to have a, you know, a 10-year financial plan that's, that's grounded in trying to address climate resilience and. You know, deeper investments in efficiency, for example. So I think maybe unpacking the scenarios and really providing the board with some. You know, a fairly, and I know the, the staff is great at this and, you know, particularly with Ref Telus's support. I think with some, a bit more granular information about the particular. Projects and investments that you're thinking of under each of the scenarios. In other words, I'm saying pull them out of the scenarios and let us see what, what are we really looking at here? You know, to, Monte's been great about, you know, making this point about, you know, about the pipelines and how do we catch up? I think there may be, you know, mild differences in view on the board about how fast we should be moving on that. So I think it would be really helpful to see that as one item, to see, you know, what some of the big ticket costs like, you know, the ozone. The ozone piece. I thought Alicia made a great point about recoating. Let's put some upfront dollars into that because over the long term, if, if I'm understanding her point. That will save our rate payers significant dollars because we won't be looking at, you know, replacing those facilities. You know, it'll, it'll extend their life. Did I get that right? That was your point about doing the recoating? Getting us on that track.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, so I think things like that, sort of pulling out things like that. And, and like I said, I don't know that we need every single detail. I'm just, you know, maybe the rest of the board will, will contradict me on that, but I think pulling out. A significant number of these. You know, of the, of the projects and of the activities that are driving these costs and. You know, I think it might be useful for the board to have an opportunity to see them away in a way that we can mix and match and. You know, because our perspective might be a little bit different, you know, it may be that, you know, there are folks and, you know, in management who are saying, well, what we've really got to do. You know, is move forward with some of these, you know, earthquake safety. You know, measures, you know, there may be another view that, well, maybe we can take a little bit of risk there because what we really want to do is. You know, work on ozone or pine mountain tunnel or whatever it is. But I think pulling those things out, well, I don't know, I'll just ask other board members, would that be, would that, that would be helpful to me? Would it be helpful to you?
Yes, of course, understand Cynthia that, you know, there's no way to assess these risks. You know, these plants have been sitting there for 60 years without the improvements that they're talking about. If they sit there for 61, 62, 63, 64, 65 years, it's not going to make a lot of difference in the risk. On the other hand, tomorrow could be the earthquake. So.
Right, no, I, I was just using it as an example. I'm not saying.
No, it's a good example. No, no, it's a good example. It's just important to understand that, you know, again, you don't know what you don't know. And, and sometimes you just have to stomach the risk and go forward without knowing the consequences. I think something like the West Peak is a, is a great example of a long-term goal. I think that's a great thing. Maybe we should start thinking about external funding, trying to get people interested in it to do the funding. You know, championing it as part of one TAM or whatever, to say, let, let's restore things to the way they were and, and let's. Approach the issues of the Native Americans who treat that ground as sacred. Let's respect their opinions and, and work with them to, to get it back. But, you know, to throw, you're right. And there's one more thing I want to say. Guys, I appreciate that, you know, the, you had one day, you sent the slides to us yesterday, last night. It's just not enough time to get through this kind of stuff. I would have rather had them in draft a week ago with draft on them. Than to say, well, we want to get them perfect and we don't want to send them to you till they're perfect because. I mean, frankly, I was, I wrote a note to Terry. I'm thanked, thanked her for sending them to me, but I hadn't even had a chance to look at them before this meeting. And we had like 12 hours to look at them or maybe 18, you know. We just need more lead time if you want meaningful feedback from us.
I, I also just want to take a moment to say thank you so much to, to all the staff who've pulled all this together. We're, we're, we're throwing lots of, of. You know, questions and I would say, I don't want to say critiques. I think they're coming from a place of trying to. Do our jobs and respond to the information you provided. Clearly so much went into this and I really appreciate it. It's really. It's thought-provoking, which is exactly what we need. And I think we're making great progress. And so I, I, I hope everybody. Who's worked on this understands like this is, has been great work. And, and there's, there's some things that we want to see going forward that I think will help all of us, but thank you for all your effort.
Well, sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I don't know, Melissa, if this is you or Ben, but what do you think about my idea? I just think we need, I just think, I'm just really hearing the board needing more information to, to really respond meaningfully about the scenarios.
Yeah, President Kohler, if I could, yeah, I appreciate your comment. And it really, I think, going the direction you're suggesting does pull it all together. Because what, what we really are interested is not necessarily resting on some scenario. This isn't a rate planning exercise, right? This is a long-term financial planning. So by breaking that down and getting direct input from the board, as you're suggesting, on priorities, that's really the key. And then we look at the priorities and we come up with a way to fund those. So I think we're going to get there in your suggestion of taking the information that's been provided, developing, we can call it a fifth scenario that, and then with a way that breaks out all the elements and we'll move back and forth. Okay, AMI, what do we move out? What do we keep in? Debt funding? So I think that's right on target in terms of setting us up well for the final two workshops.
To be clear, I'm not suggesting that you take the time now to do a fifth scenario. I think the board just needs the information about the individual chunks of projects. Again, not every single one, but just, you know, the, the information that you've already pulled together to build these scenarios, right? So I think we just need to see, you know, in very round numbers. You know, I don't think we need it down to the, you know, to the thousands of dollars. But, you know, I think we need to see in round numbers what you are anticipating. And I know that's a ridiculous thing to even ask over 10 years, because that'll depend on a lot of things. But just roughly, what are the priorities and round numbers about what you're thinking about? You know, for, you know, for these expenditures? You know, like, I'm just assuming West Peak is a big chunk, for example. And I don't mean to be harping on that. Maybe that's something we absolutely want to do and we want to do it right away. I don't, you know, I just, you know, some of these, I think it will be easier for the board to give you the kind of feedback you're looking at if we have a better understanding about how we can mix and match the elements of these scenarios. That's, that's all I'm saying. And then from that, I think you will then be able to build the fifth scenario. Does that, does that make sense?
It absolutely does.
Okay.
All right. Really very helpful feedback. And I think what we can consider is that the scenarios are kind of bookends, right? And so we've heard a range of perspectives within that. And there may be a fifth one, there may be, you know, an adaptive scenario, who knows? But I'm getting that, that detail and with enough time, as Director Russell said, to really study it and know it, to help us make decisions. That's, that's really helpful information. Definitely heard about more creative funding, grant funding. Are there different ways? Do we have a sense of that? So we'll bring that back to you as well. And also taking a look at some of that distributed infrastructure, recycled water, water conservation pieces coming back to you. So, you know, we'll take a look at those scenarios that we've got. I didn't hear a lot of, hey, we ought to be at the reactionary scenario. I'm hearing interest in moving a little bit, at least a little bit, to the right of those pipeline scenarios as long as we can make the numbers work, right? And then I'm also hearing on the other end of the perspective, hey, this all sounds great. I don't like the price tag. Can we figure out a way magically to make that price tag lower? Maybe it's not so magic, right?
And we know that Ref Telus can do that for us.
Yeah.
When you figure that out, let me know, because I got a dozen other clients that would be very interested in that.
Wouldn't that be awesome? Yeah, yeah. So, so somewhere in the middle probably is where we end up landing. But definitely, I want to bring all that back to you in workshop number three. Before we wrap up, Terry, was there any additional public comment we need to get?
I believe there may be one. Let me ask Mr. Roberts. Yes.
Not really. I think the idea of mixing and matching and, and understanding priorities will help to refine the path forward. Thank you.
That's it.
Great, thank you. Ben, any other words of wisdom?
I just want to take one quick moment to thank the members of the public who sat through this. This is a long, complicated meeting and we do appreciate your participation and your engagement.
Yeah. And if I could, on behalf of staff, we appreciate the time of the board and the engagement and the feedback and direction you gave us, as well as the comments from the public. And we're going to integrate it all and more to come. But this is really exactly what we were hoping for. So thank you.
Great. And with that, I'll turn it back to President Kohler.
I believe that is our agenda, unless there's anything else, Ben, that you wanted to say. I'm sorry, Melissa, I should have let you do that before I jumped in with thanking everybody. Maybe one last thanks to Ref Telus and you for your facilitation, which as always is terrific, and for the work that the Ref Telus team has done with our staff. Any other board comments? And I don't, I don't think we do have any other business on the agenda, right? That's it for today?
That's correct.
Okay, then I think I'll just say thanks to everybody and have a great rest of your, your Tuesday.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Lot.
Bye, everybody.
Thank you.